Morning, I now call the meeting into session. My name is Calvin Arnold, I am the chairperson of LRA. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the mayor's office, Comptroller's office and the board of education, we thank you. On behalf of our director, Shelton Andersons. We thank you. For those that have a presentation, you will be given two minutes to give your presentation. So please make it, try to stay under that two minutes. And now we want to turn it over to Ms. We want to do a roll call also.
Commissioner Arnold.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Heit.
Present.
Do we have any reports from the commissioners? Any reports?
No report.
No report. Thank you. You want to, is Dee going to?
We also have minutes.
We move that, make a motion.
Make a motion to.
The close session. We don't have to make a motion, but we can just move that to the close session.
If we're moving the minutes to close session.
Yeah. So you didn't approve the minutes?
Yeah. Commissioner, we have minutes and I make motion that we accept the minutes as presented in our packets from the June 25th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. May we do a roll call for the vote?
Commissioner Arnold.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Heit.
Yes.
So minutes have been approved, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we have the public. Is that? Next, we have the public and we can, as Commissioner Arnold stated, each person that has registered with Ms. Harris there is welcome to approach the podium as called. So with that, Dee, could you tell us the first person?
Number nine. Yeah. Nine.
Good morning, everybody. We want to buy with my husband the land. We have house number forty-four, forty-nine Garfield Avenue. And we want to buy neighbors' land to tie it up there and to clean every month, to cut rust, to cut down the trees. And because we want to, our neighbors be clean and be nice and neighborhoods. And we want to buy one house. And we plan it to, we have small company with my husband. We can repair this house and to lend, to rent for somebody. And like this plan. And I don't know what I want to say. And we want to buy this house, yeah.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
No worries. Okay, Dee, please.
Next, item number twenty-nine for Amarin.
Oh. Oh, they're asking for comments? Yeah.
Hi. My name is Rich Fahar and I'm representing Union Electric Amarin. And we want to acquire this small parcel. It's two hundred and seventy-nine square feet. And it's adjacent to the property that we just purchased. And we're going, they're going to install a substation there. And this little sliver is right there, adjacent to it. So we wanted to acquire that. It's not good for anything else.
Thank you. Dee. Ms. Harris.
Item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen.
Hi, my name is Sherwin Marshawn. I was just, I bought numerous properties before. And this property caught my eye because I think Prop NS had stabilized it. And the neighborhood was clean and we keep that one. Then the rest of the neighborhood would stay cleaned. I would get it and rent it out. That's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harris, next on our agenda.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Maureen Wagoner and I represent the African Peoples Education and Defense Fund. And we are applying to buy two properties that surround a property that we currently own, our nonprofit owns. We plan to put a garden on that lot, but we'd like to make it bigger to provide more food for the community. We received a grant from the USDA for food security in North St. Louis. We have experience already developing LRA properties. We also have a garden at Alice in West Florissant. These two gardens will be connected. Our goal is to provide five thousand pounds of food to the community. And also to provide food to the Uhura Bakery and Cafe and do training in nutrition and food preparation of natural foods. And make this also a beautiful spot that people can have some rest and come in and sit among the trees and the fruit and enjoy the work there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Gordon Carlson is here for items numbers one, three, and twenty-four.
Gordon Carlson, I'm on the West End Neighborhood Development Corporation. We review properties that are coming up. We've worked with the Johnsons and improved their development on Cabbany Place. So we don't object to their putting, buying another lot on Cabbany Place. We would question though, they're buying Vernon. They have owned these lots for many years and have not done any development. The property on Vernon is actually Goodfellow and the Hotemont Track. And so we are concerned that that is a critical part of our neighborhood plan. And we are concerned that they have not presented what they plan to do. And since they have not moved ahead with any of the development on Cabbany, on the lots they own, we're concerned that they're buying more property that they don't specifically have and haven't met with the Development Review Committee for the Vernon property. Also, number three, this is adjacent to the St. Vincent Greenway. Last year, someone wanted to buy these lots and buy three of the lots and put a sprawling one-story suburban-style ranch house on the property. And the neighborhood said, no, all the other houses in the neighborhood are two and three stories. If you want to do any development, we need two and three-story houses. This new developer has not come to us to present what their ideas are. And since it's adjacent to the Greenway, we are concerned that we can have some say as to, so we'd like them to come to the Development Review Committee before they are given the right to the property. Then on twenty-one, LRA has always said that they do not want to facilitate private land banking. And that's what this offer is. It's a private land bank. And my understanding is that this developer has bought a number of NS properties. But to buy all of these properties, particularly in our ward, we have concern because we don't have any idea what they want to do, how successful they have been with the NS properties that they bought. And so this looks like very much a private land bank and we would object to that. Thank you.
Just clear presentation, there are five properties in the West End of the list for twenty-one.
We're ready.
Yeah.
Page for item number sixty-five, Mark Guido. One.
Four. What number?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Thanks.
Yes, my name is Mark Guido, I'm with GND Smile Service. I want to inquire this property, these properties on North Twentieth Street, this is where I was raised at. This will be my first time purchasing LRA properties and everything. My first piece of properties and stuff I have in Illinois. But I would love to do this because it's in my neighborhood and I just see my neighborhood going down to nothing. The whole street is pretty much, ain't too many people living on the street. My best friend, motherly, right across the street from these properties I'm trying to inquire. And so I want to just be able to get this house, I want to live in it. But also when I'm not living in it and I'm traveling around, I want to be able to, you know, rent it out of Airbnb and I want to put on the lot, the license and stuff next to it that I want to get. I want to put a workshop in there because I do have business and stuff. So I have equipment and everything. I got a, right now I'm renting fourteen thousand square feet over there in Goodfellow. On Goodfellow Natural Bridge over there, you know. So I want to be able to build my own workshop, be able to put my stuff in and have my house next to it. So that's the reason that I'm reaching for this and to clean up the community. Because I also already go through alleys and stuff, cleaning up trash. It's like one of the things that I do to try to keep the community clean. Right now, that building is going under because there's just so many trees growing in it now. Besides the last, before, you know, the tornado hit, it wasn't that bad. But now, I guess, you know, all this rain we had, I went past it the other day, it's just trees all around. And so, but yeah, I'm just ready to do this and start cleaning up the community. And then once I land this, I'm pretty sure, once I show you all what I'm going to do, then I'm trying to work on down the street and to, you know, to clean it all the way up. That's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number four, Andrew Sawa. Number four. Oh, you're not getting much.
Yes, you will.
Okay, we'll move on to the open desk.
Okay.
Clifton Ewing, item number forty-eight.
Good morning. My break, please. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Clifton Ewing. I stay at forty-seven twenty-eight Laverty. I'm trying to purchase a lot next to it, which is forty-seven twenty-two. We've got problems with people dumping trash in the back of the lot. And I want to purchase it so I can clean it up, fence it off, and add on to my property. If that's possible.
Thank you for my great presentation.
Now here from Danielle Taylor. Don't have your number in state, would you let us know, please? What item is your number?
What number?
What's your number?
To my house.
On your sheet.
Thirty-eight eleven.
Did you make an offer? Did you make an offer on what you want?
Yeah, you talked a lot.
She has her schedule, I didn't have any agendas when she was here, so she did a fair offer.
Oh, I know what number. I know I own thirty-eight oh nine St. Louis Avenue, I'm trying to buy a lot thirty-eight eleven. That's the one, too. I just recently closed out on my first house, I'm Danielle Taylor.
Oh. Sixteen, no, it's called.
Pauline.
Yeah, thirty-eight eleven. Y'all ready?
One second.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I own thirty-eight oh nine St. Louis Avenue. I just recently bought my first house, which is that, closed out in March. And lately, thirty-eight eleven is vacant. We've been keeping up, before I moved in the neighborhood, the neighbor next door to that been making sure that the grass and everything been cut. And I made sure that my half of my grass be cut to keep up the neighborhood. The neighborhood is upcoming neighborhood and is getting really good. A lot of people coming in and buying up the property and the lots on the, on the street. So I want to buy this lot to extend to my backyard and make my backyard bigger than what it is. And that's what I want, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, for item number eleven. Yadi Development.
Hello, my name is Terrez Williams and I'm here on behalf of Yadi Development. We specialize in historic preservations. So we seen this property and it is a beautiful property. It has nice structure and nice bones. And we would love to do a historic preservation on it. And that consists of bringing everything back to the original former glory, like with this slate roof, the wood windows, the wood doors, keeping everything pretty much intact the way it originally was built. Well, while in the inside, doing a complete renovation with moderate updates, such as a open floor plan, changing out water tap systems, changing out the sewer laterals, new electric, new plumbing, garage, the full three-sixty turnaround. We've been in business for over fifteen years. We've done numerous of historic preservations over in Shaw neighborhood, Tower Grove, Benton Park, Benton Park West, Dutch Town, and those formations. So we have a nice portfolio of doing these jobs over and over again. This is something that's completely of norm to us. This property is nice, it's on St. Louis Avenue, the neighborhood is coming back. And, you know, I would just love to see this property be back to its original state again. So.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Right.
That concludes the list that I have signed out. Let's see if anyone that was overlooked, I want to. We have someone lying on the table. Pauline, hold on. So Dee, can you let us know what number that you want to speak to? You can speak now.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, how we doing today? Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I'm just concerned about the property. I put the bid in for eighty-three sixty-two House Fairview Road. The only concern I have, because I accepted your previous bid, was that it had a forty-seven thousand dollar loan. I purchased the property from LRA that had a loan on it, so I didn't know how to go about it. And I already purchased the title search. My name is Cooley Warren, by the way. I talked to Ms. Harris and Ms. Wright and I apologize to them ladies because I did talk their ear off. I was confused about it. I really was. So that's all I wanted to say, I'm not going to take too much of your time today.
Thank you for your presentation.
Can disturb our Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I'm representation of Cornerstone City, see the administrative partner of the West End Invisitation Park Implementation Development Plan. And the DRC, I would like to second the deferment offer on the properties for Sylvester Johnson's, the Real Estate Enterprise Number One. And also twenty-one with vibrant blue realty as according to our development plan for the West End Invisitation Park.
Point of clarification, if I may ask a question. In the presentation, it was mentioned that there was support for item fifty-seven thirty Cabbany, but that fifty-seven fifty Vernon, that was the one that was in question. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there? Have we concluded? Okay.
This Lisa Potts.
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, I didn't know if it was necessary. My name is Lisa Potts, I am a twenty-four-year resident of the West End community. I am also a part of the West End We Collab Implementation Table. I just wanted to, you know, echo the points that were made already this morning by Gordon and Antoinette. I am a long-term resident and have been involved in the creation of this city-approved, adopted plan. And it is important for us to stay true to our plan that the residents have outlined for the next twenty years in our community. And we respectfully ask for anybody that's doing development in the tenth ward to simply meet with our residents and our neighbors to make sure that the plans that they are proposing align with the wishes of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. We have one more.
Miss Monique.
Hello, can you hear me? Monique Thomas, Executive Director of Cornerstone Corporation. As Antoinette Ayers and Lisa Potts and Gordon Carlson have also made presentations about the West End Invisitation Park and the work we have done supporting the resident leaders who have an approved city plan. In addition to what was said about one highlighting and doubling down on twenty-one, I believe it was a vibrant realty, if you go there. And the concern, the specific concern about this definitely appearing to be private land banking. As for, for me and my house, at least for West End Invisitation Park, we definitely would need to understand what their intention would be for that.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Okay, that concludes our presentations for today. We will get started going through the offers at this time. We will review each of the offers and make our motion to approve, accept, reject, or counter the offer. At this time, there's not an opportunity, that's why we, opportunity to discuss these offers. So that's why we ask that if you have questions or concerns that you ask them upfront. So we're going to go ahead and get started with our review of the offers. Under our first, as we review the offers, these are parcels that are owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. These are single-family residence side lots, two families, and four families, etc. The offers have submitted offers to purchase for the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects. An extension of their yard space, commercial gardens, or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first offer we have in this category, under the heading of new construction and new construction under the new construction program, these are Class A lots. They have a minimum of four thousand square feet in total land with no more contiguous, three contiguous lots per offer. The first offer that we have is presented, offered by SNS Real Estate Enterprise LLC, care of Sylvia Johnson, for fifty-seven thirty Cabbany Avenue and fifty-seven fifty Vernon Avenue. I'd like to make a motion that we accept item address fifty-seven thirty Cabbany Avenue and defer address fifty-seven fifty Vernon Avenue for further review. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we call for the vote on this?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Heit.
Yes.
It's been moved in second, hearing no objections, motion carries. Number two, Kendall Developments LLC, care of Jessica Gaines. We have multiple properties on Monroe and one on Clinton. I move that we accept offer of. I move that we accept the offer of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars as a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries.
Just a point of clarification.
Okay. All right. Point of clarification, um, on item one, uh, we are going to yeah, we need to, yeah, okay, all right. We're going to counter um that first one. Uh, is a point of reference fifty-seven uh thirty Cabney um at yeah, yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah, that's okay, I get it. I'll have my cactus later, okay. Um, point of clarification, um, we are going to uh accept as a counter. I'm sorry, we're going to counter uh instead of accept, so I'm withdrawing that motion there. And we're going to counter fifty-seven thirty Cabney Avenue at fifteen thousand ninety dollars. And we're going to defer uh any action on fifty-seven fifty Vernon until further review. Um, may I have a second on that? It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Twenty-four month option, okay.
So, so just for clarity, because there's been a couple motions, I think it sounds like the commission wants to um counter the offer for fifty-seven thirty Cabney Avenue at fifteen thousand ninety dollars and a twenty-four month option, the closing contingent upon plans, budget, and financing, and defer the offer on fifty-seven fifty Vernon.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think we'll need a, a roll call on that one.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Hite?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved second and voted on, no objections, motion carries. Okay, item number three. Okay. So, on this one, next to. Uh, item number three, we have multiple uh properties listed. Uh, offer is Von J Dent. I move to defer any actions on these parcels pending further review. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we have the As Is Rehab Program. Under the As Is Rehab Program, these are class A residential buildings with up to six units. No more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or a commercial building. Item number four, Andre Seward, uh, property address sixty forty Emma Avenue. I'd like to move that we accept offer of eight hundred and fifty dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item five, Ah, Ahmad Wright, uh, property address fifty-nine sixty-seven Ridge Avenue. I move to accept offer of six hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item six, Darian Schaefer, property address thirty-five thirty-four North Newstead Avenue. I move to accept offer of four hundred dollars with a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seven, offer Latasha Peterson, property address fifty thirty Page Avenue. Move to reject offer due to lack of proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eight, Investors Union LLC, care of Randy Jones. Move to accept offer of seven thousand seven hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number nine, Talis Williams, property address forty-seven sixty-nine Dr. Martin Luther King. I move that we accept offer of four thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item ten, Darrell Maurice Howard, property address thirty-nine twenty-eight California Avenue. Move to accept offer of a thousand dollars as a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eleven, Yadi Development One LLC, care of Therese Williams. Move that we accept offer of forty-two hundred with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twelve, A Better Life Brighter Future LLC, care of LaShana Boone. Move to reject offer due to lack of proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirteen, Charlotte Young, property addresses thirteen nineteen Bayard, fifty-six twelve West Florissant. Move to reject uh thirteen nineteen Bayard Avenue uh due to it being impacted by the tornado and scheduled to be demolished and move to uh reject uh fifty-six twelve uh West Florissant due to lack of proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fourteen, there are multiple uh properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, offer Bob Young, move to reject offer due to insufficient uh financial proof to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been uh, it's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item fifteen, uh, Gino twenty, care of Keisha Galladay, move to, there are multiple properties thirty-five twenty-one Harris Avenue, forty-two oh six Lexington, and forty-two oh eight Lexington Avenue. Move to reject uh offer due to lack of proof of financial capacity to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Offer sixteen, Pauline Taylor, uh, property address fifty-one ten North Twentieth. Uh, move to reject offer due to proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seventeen, Charlene Mershon, property address sixty-one fifty-one North Point Boulevard. Uh, move to accept offer of five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number eighteen, we have uh multiple properties listed in um exhibit A. Um, we have nine, uh, ninety-five fifty-nine Ellis and the multiple properties, uh, move to reject um eighty-four twenty-two Lowell in favor of another offer and counter the remaining properties for fifteen hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um, item number nineteen, um, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. And if the offer is Vitale, and I'm not going to butcher the last name. Um, we uh like to uh make a motion that we remove and reject uh parcel forty-four forty-three Garfle Avenue uh due to it not being uh used as in its highest and best use and counter the remaining parcels, counter for the remaining parcels for three thousand forty-nine dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty, Alicia Buckley, property address fifty twenty Ren. Move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next our next section is under the heading of development. Uh, under the development program, our offers for parcels owned by L R A that consist of physical structures uh for the rehab and or construction of any combination of the following, rehab and or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and or construction of multiple residential buildings and rehab of residential buildings. Uh, this is item number twenty-one. Um, on exhibit A, there are multiple properties listed in exhibit A. I moved, uh, like to make a recommendation that we accept the parcels uh that are listed in exhibit A under the heading Ward Twelve Only. Under Ward Twelve Properties as a twelve-month option uh at thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, and defer the remaining properties for community outreach and community engagement. Do I have a second? So, yeah, that's it, that's it, okay. It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Under our next heading is the General Lot Purchase Program. Under the General Lot Purchase Program provides L R A for any purpose other than new construction, building, rehab, or development. Uh, item number twenty-two, offer Larry Moore. Uh, property address fifty-five ten Emerson. I move to counter offer uh for seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-three, the offer is Jevon Legon Senior. Uh, property address nineteen hundred Ober Avenue. I move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Twenty-four, Bella Group Investments LLC, care of Shante McCoy. Move to, and the property address is twenty-two oh seven Hadley Street. Move to counter offer for nine hundred and fifty-six dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Item, oh, sorry, proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-five, offer is Danny, Danielle Taylor. Property address thirty-eight eleven St. Louis Avenue. Move to counter offer for eight hundred and fifty-four dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-six, Circle of Life Associates. Care of Sarah Luckett, property address forty-one thirty-three Geraldine Avenue. Move to accept offer of six thousand dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, Wusi Enterprise LLC, care of Jeffrey Boyd. Property address is fifty-seven forty-six Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Move to counter the offer at three thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-eight. Item twenty-eight, Angela Lovelace, property address is fifty-two forty-seven Page Avenue. Move, I move to counter this offer for two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, Union Electric, also known as Ameren. Uh, property address is fifty-four thirteen Hoover Avenue. Um, I move to accept offer of five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty, Montorius Tobias, property address forty-seven thirteen Newbury Terrace. Move to counter offer for one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-one. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, offer is Jeffrey Gunn and Timothy Gunn. I move to counter the offer. Um, at four thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. With closing contingent upon approval financing. Yeah, okay. All right, we need to. Uh, this is pending review. Uh, sorry about that. Um, I'd like to withdraw my motion. And um, look at another motion. I'd like to make a motion to defer uh, action on this. Um, parcel pending uh, community input and review. Um, and upon that review, then we uh, will then move forward with a counter. But we at this time need review from the community. So I'd like to defer any action on this parcel pending review. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-two, offer Brittany Stokes. Property, multiple properties, uh, forty-three thirty-nine De Soto, forty-three forty-one De Soto and forty-three forty-seven. De Soto. I moved to counter offer for one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-three, offer Cooley Warren. I move to counter this offer for three thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-four, offer Talis Williams. Uh, property address fifty fifty-four Terry Avenue. Um, move to uh, reject uh, this offer due to insufficient information. Regarding to disposition of the property or plans for the property. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Offer thirty-five, uh, offer is Keisha Robertson. Property address thirty-seven eighty-two Lee Avenue. Move to accept offer of five hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-six, Orlando Pifus, Pipus. Um. Property address is forty-nine twenty-two Labadee Avenue. Move to counter offer for two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars with closing contingent upon proof. Of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-seven, Felicia Collins. Property addresses uh, fifty-three thirty-one Theodosia. And fifty-three thirty-five Theodosia. I move to counter this offer. At one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item thirty-eight. Offer African Peoples Ed- Education and Defense Fund. Care of Maureen Wagner. Uh, we have multiple properties thirty-nine oh five West Forests and Avenue and twenty-one twenty. Twenty-one eighty-nine Linton Avenue. I move that we accept offer of two thousand two hundred and seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objection. Motion carries. Offer thirty-nine, Mary Washington. Property addresses uh, fifty twenty-nine. Kingsington Avenue and fifty twenty-five Kingsington. Uh, we move to counter that offer for. Five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars with closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty, property address is fifty-one, I'm sorry. Uh, property offer is fifty-one thirty-nine Enright LLC care of Erica Henderson. We have fifty-one thirty-seven Enright Avenue and fifty-one forty-three Enright Avenue. Uh, I'd like to make motion to uh, counter this offer for five thousand ninety-seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-one, uh, we have uh, the Eagles Nest Retirement Center. Foundation care of uh, Monique Buchanan. We have property address twenty-five forty-three North Grand. And twenty-seven oh seven North Grand Boulevard. I move to counter this offer uh, at fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item number forty-two, Dashia Robinson. Property addresses thirty-nine sixty-five Aldine Avenue and sixty-nine. Six, thirty-nine, sixty-nine uh, Aldine Avenue. I move to counter this offer. At one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget. And financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-three. Um, Salis Paris Perry, I'm sorry, Cialis Perry. Uh, property addresses fifty fifteen oh six Palm Street and fifteen eighteen Palm Street. Um, and move to accept offer of one thousand dollars with closing. Contingent upon proof of financing and to go to the appointing authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. It uh, previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-four, Eddie Buckley. Property address fifty forty-seven Genevieve. I move to counter this offer at six hundred and seventy-one dollars with closing contingent upon approval. And financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-five. Prop uh, offer is Mohammed Harry Abdullah Abdullah. Uh, property addresses forty-two forty-five Lee Avenue, forty-two forty-one Lee Avenue and forty-two thirty-seven. Lee Avenue. Uh, I'd like to move to counter uh, this offer. At two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars with closing contingent upon approval, plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Uh, item forty-six. Uh, property uh, offer is Brittany Stokes. Uh, property address is twenty-one oh five. East College Avenue. I move to defer uh, this offer for further review. Uh, by the commissioners. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-seven, Take Investments LLC. Um, we have property address forty-two thirty-four West Sacramento. I move to count offer at one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. With closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-eight, Clifton, Clifton Ewing. Property address forty-seven twenty-two Labadee. Uh, I'd like to move to accept this offer of three thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. With closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item forty-nine, John Watson. Uh, we have property addresses fifty-one ninety-two Page. And fifty-one eighty-four Page. I move to accept offer of six thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon proof of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Under our next category is the side lot program. And in the side lot program, these are parcels that consist of unoccupied ground. That's too small to support new construction. These are non-buildable lots. And are parcels that are less than four thousand square feet and cannot be contiguous to another L R A parcel. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used as a side lot. And expand personal property. The first property we have in this category, item fifty. Is forty-seven thirty-seven Newberry Terrace. Offer Leslie and Geneva Gillespie. Um, and I move to accept um, their offer of a hundred dollars. Man, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Uh, item fifty-one, fifty-nine forty-four Highland Avenue. Offer Helen Jones. Move to accept offer. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Uh, previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item fifty-two. Uh, property address twenty-two twenty Alberta. Uh, offer is Gerard Esperanza. And I move to accept offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objection. Motion carries. Um, item fifty-three, uh, property address is thirty-six fifty-two Selina Street. Offer is Lala Rubina and I move to accept offer. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of option renewal. Option renewals are offers, requests. For additional time to complete projects due to the construction delays, funding, uh, um, these options. And options that are near uh, expiration. Offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals for options. And extensions of time. Um, number fifty-four, Camp Jovan Incorporated. Uh, I move to accept uh, a twelve-month option. At two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars with closing contingent upon approval, plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role um, as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item uh, fifty-five, uh, we have favored LLC. Multiple properties on page. I move that we accept this option renewal. At four thousand seven hundred and one dollars for a twelve-month option. With closing contingent upon approval, plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Uh, this month, we do not have any prop N S stabilized buildings. Um, under our next category would be donations. Donations or parcels which consist of unoccupied ground are structures owned by constituents who desire to donate. Due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation is entered into the L R A inventory and sold using the L R A process. Uh, item number fifty-six, Perpetual Praise and Worship Ministries. Um, we move to and the property uh, address is twenty-seven oh one through twenty-seven oh nine Clara Avenue. And we move to reject this offer of donation due to L R's, L R A's. Uh, lack of capacity to accept the project and support that. Um, the, the accept the property and support. Uh, it's maintenance and upkeep. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item fifty-seven, property address is fifty-three fifty-eight Union Boulevard. Offer is John Crowder. Move to accept the donation. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item fifty-eight, we have property address forty-five twenty-one Saint Louis Avenue. Offer is uh, Leslie and Miles and uh, that uh, I make a motion to accept that donation. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes. From the original approved board decision. These may include a change of end use, name change, et cetera. The request must go before the board for the cons- for consideration. Uh, first one we have is a change of end use for Camp Javan. Uh, I move that we accept this change of end use. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Um, next, under the category, um, we have, yes, sixty. Item number sixty, um, we have a motion to reconsider. And uh, that is property address forty-one seventeen Warren. At this time. Uh, the commission, I'd like to make motion to reject, uh, motion to reconsider. Uh, the offer is not in the highest and best use for the parcel. Um, like to make a motion. To uh, decline that reconsideration. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objection. Motion carries. Um, under our next category are the items that we're considering that have been deferred. Um, item number sixty-one. Uh, property address is fifty-four thirty-eight Oriole Avenue. And that's uh, Robert Deal and Tiffany Hunter. I move to defer any action on this parcel pending um, community input. Prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objection. Motion carries. Uh, under the next category, we have, um, well, not category, but item number sixty-two. Uh, multiple properties are listed in exhibit A um, by Alpha and Omega. The beginning and end demolition company LLC. Um, I'd like to make a motion to. Um, accept the offer um, as a twenty-four month option at six thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item sixty-three, American Tower. Uh, property address is third twenty-nine fifty Benton Street. Um, and I move to accept uh, that offer of six thousand six hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote. Hearing no objections. Motion carries. Item sixty-four. Item sixty-four, uh, property address is fourteen thirty-three Clinton. And offer U S Services LLC. I move to reject offer as uh, property, same property was accepted by another offer. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-five, offer Mark Guido, multiple properties on North Twentieth. Uh, move to accept offer of two thousand two hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-six, Brianna Pope, offer. Address is thirty-eight oh nine Cook Avenue. Uh, I moved to counter the offer for one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-seven, okay. Um, we have multiple properties here. And we have eighty-four twenty-two Lowell, uh, sixty fifty-two Schulte and forty-four seventy-eight Pen Roads. Uh, move to accept offer for two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, that concludes our offers for today. Uh, with that, um, we will move on to uh resolutions. Um, we have our first resolution and that is resolution number twenty-five. L R A one twenty-six. And I would ask that our director Shelton Anderson, if you could speak to this resolution first.
Yes, uh, good morning, Commissioner Brown and Commissioners. Thank you. So, uh, we'd like to call at this time our Chief Financial Officer, Charlie Hine, uh, who will present the budget. Uh, I'll just make one quick comment that the budget being proposed uh, has been reviewed by L R A, uh, and certainly we are in support of moving forward with the budget to support the fiscal twenty twenty-six year. Uh, with that, turn it over to Charlie.
Thank you, Shelton and Commissioners. This is an annual process that we go through and we like to do it prior to the start of the year. We missed out in June, uh, I was gone and my, uh, uh, support team was basically gone the last week of June. So, we'll cover it, uh, in, uh, in this meeting. The, the, it's a budget, uh, for the fiscal year, uh, ending June thirtieth to twenty-sixth. So, it starts, uh, July one of twenty-five, about thirty days ago and ends next June. The, um, the budget also calls for a transfer to Saint Louis Development Corporation of three hundred thousand, and I will get into that a little later. But attached to your resolution is a, uh, budget page. And I, um, think in your packet that was originally sent to you, um, it was a two thousand twenty-five budget. Then there should have been a, uh, something sent maybe as recently as yesterday for the two thousand twenty-six budget. Is that correct, Erica? So, if you don't have that, I have extra copies. Should say agency budget two oh two six at the top.
Yes.
And, uh, it's a five-column report. The first two columns show the budget for twenty-four and the actual results for twenty-four. The middle two, uh, show the budget for, I mean, the third column shows the budget for twenty-five and the projected, uh, numbers for, uh, that as far as revenue and expense. And then the fifth column shows the budget for F Y twenty-six. And that budget, uh, is divided top half revenue, bottom half expense. Uh, the, the large numbers, the program numbers at the bottom. The five million eight and the four seven 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 are offset by similar amounts in expense. That's because L R A is a pass-through entity and those are, uh, programs that L R A is currently in the process of, uh, administering. The, uh, the top number of five million eight hundred thousand primarily relates to the, uh, demolition program that's provided by D E D at the state. We're projecting revenue of five million there. And, um, the other eight hundred thousand is money supplied by the city through the Eco Devo program that, uh, is set aside for, uh, particular properties in the, in the city. And, uh, there's about eight hundred thousand, so that's a fifty-eight hundred, uh, item. If you're all following me, the, and then the, uh, right under, below it is, um, grants that flow through C D B G, Community Development Block Grant, that's C D A. They're our next-door neighbor here and have been for a long time. Uh, four million seven seven seven. Uh, one million seven 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 is, relates to, uh, the L R A maintenance program. Uh, with assistance to forestry and to our maintenance crew and some, maybe, uh, a little bit of tree, uh, cleanup. And, um, the, the balance of three million is the beautification program that we administer through the ARPA funds and, uh, that project's ongoing. Um, if you look up at the top number, the sale of property, six hundred thousand. That's, uh, Sinetta's goal for next year. Uh, all these items that you, uh, approve and are actually closed are in that number. Um, it's jet, that's, that's generally, uh, an average, a good average number. I think the average for over the past ten years is five eighty. We've, uh, we've been as high as one million three and F Y nineteen and then COVID hit and we went to four four eighty or four sixty or something like that in F Y twenty. And, uh, have been trying to, uh, uh, get back to normalcy. I, I think on a normal year, we would be seven or eight hundred thousand. Um, rental income of eight thousand, option income of a hundred thousand. You know, when we do an option with a developer, um, it's, it's non-refundable. So, when that money comes in, it's treated as income and or revenue. And, uh, there are cer- special circumstances where it might be refunded, but that would come before you. The, um, interest income of twenty thousand, other twelve processing fees and stuff like that. So, I got total revenue of eleven three one seven under expense. The eighty thousand is insurance expense, uh, fifty-five title, fifteen appraisals. There used to be a time when appraisals were higher and that's, uh, I think the state law changed that we don't have to, uh, appraise all the properties that, that we now, uh, market. The, um, acquisition and holding expense, ten thousand. Uh, property expense, maintenance, uh, two hundred thousand. And, uh, that would cover items that the C D B G program wouldn't cover in their work program. Um, then I got, uh, program non-C D B G, five thousand. And, um, the other two offsetting numbers, uh, that I talked about before. So, total expense, ten million nine forty-two, net income of three hundred seventy-five thousand. Uh, the beginning fund balance, a negative three hundred and nineteen thousand. The transfer to S L D C of three hundred, should you, should you approve this? And the, uh, the projected fund balance at the end of fiscal twenty-six is negative two forty-four. Uh, I can say we've been, that's, uh, uh, going trending in the right direction. I think, uh, it's been negative since two thousand thirteen, much higher than that. So, we appreciate the help we get from C D A. That really helps, uh, in moving us forward out of the negative and into the positive. But this is, uh, um, this is a pretty good report. And, uh, regarding the three hundred thousand and why we transfer that to S L D C is this, uh, this board along with the other alphabet boards, L C R A, P I E, um, Port Authority. They, um, have agreements with S L D C to provide staffing. And, um, the three hundred hot thousand is sent to S L D C to offset the cost of staffing. There's probably, and, um, regarding the staffing of L R A type activities, uh, there's a maintenance staffing, like we got a field crew and then the support for the maintenance crew down here. That's C D A pretty well covers in their work program. But we have the, uh, marketing side, the, uh, real estate sales side that, uh, actually this meeting is, uh, about real estate sales. And, uh, the people that support that, um, are part of that three hundred thousand. It's from Shelton, uh, and pretty much every member of his team down here, uh, that you, uh, that you see. So, uh, and then there's the support that finance gives L R A and legal and, uh, the executive director. So, it's really, uh, the cost is much more than that to support L R A. Uh, and I'll open it up for questions.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With the information that has been presented, uh, I'd like to make, uh, the motion that we accept resolution number twenty-five L R A one twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hine?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved in second and properly voted. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Okay, so that was one twenty-six. Our next resolution is resolution number twenty-five L R A one twenty-seven. And with that, um, for your comments, I'll turn that over to, uh, Director Real Estate.
Yes, uh, thank you again, Commissioner Brown. Uh, so, we'd like to present resolution number twenty-five dash L R A dash one twenty-seven. And to give you just some brief context, uh, as you all know, with the unfortunate, uh, incident of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five tornado, uh, there has been several properties that are both L R A-owned, uh, city-owned and private properties uh, within the tornado impact zone. And from the tornado, uh, there was a formation of several, uh, city staff, uh, as well as S L D C staff who have supported the Emergency Operations Center, uh, which is now, has moved over to the Office of Recovery. And through those efforts, there have been specific L R A properties and private properties in the impact zone that poses a public risk, uh, that has been severely damaged. Uh, properties that in lay terms, uh, are completely devastated and leveled. And so with that, uh, as you may know, the Urban Greening Program, uh, which was formed several years ago, uh, in a partnership and an agreement with M S D, uh, was really about looking at properties that pose a risk for sewer overflowing uh, and really thinking about how do we create a space for removing properties that would impact, uh, water retention, water runoff, uh, and the overall storm drainage system. Uh, so, this is a resolution that is not seeking for additional funding. Uh, it is to use the funding that currently exists within the Urban Greening Program, uh, which has been allocated uh, and for L R A to actually administer the program. And specifically to demolish forty severely storm-damaged structures, uh, both of which are a combination of L R A-owned, uh, and private properties that of course are vacant, abandoned, uh, were vacant, abandoned prior to the tornado, uh, and posed the most immediate risk. Uh, so, this is being brought before the L R A Commission. It has already been brought before the L C R A Commission. Uh, L C R A will be the entity which actually executes the demolitions themselves. Uh, and so by matter of procedure, uh, it is a requirement that the L R A Commission approve L C R A to move forward with the demolition and execution, uh, of the program and the funding that supports it. So, with that, uh, I have no further comments and we'll turn it over to you Commissioners for any questions.
Okay, any questions? With the information that has been presented, I'd like to make the motion that we accept uh, resolution number twenty-five L R A one twenty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have resolution number twenty-five L R A one twenty-eight. And this is to reclassify parcels as Class B and authorizing the transfer of such properties to the land clearance for redevelopment authority for infill housing development. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn that over to Shelton to have further information about.
Sure, yes. Thank you again, Commissioner. So, uh, this resolution number twenty-five dash L R A dash one twenty-eight, uh, as you stated, is the reclassification of parcels. And in common practice, uh, whenever there are potential developments or planned developments between, uh, either L R A or L C R A, uh, or even S L D C as the, uh, the parent to any of the development boards. Uh, by matter of procedure, uh, we seek to move forward with reclassifying specific parcels uh, so that they can actually go into the parcelship for, uh, future development. And so I think, as you know, uh, several funding, uh, bubbles, I would say, uh, have been administered to S L D C and to L R A. Uh, one of those funded programs is with, with regards to infill housing. Uh, and so infill housing essentially is the development of new housing, uh, in a creative, uh, form in trying to do two things, one achieving, uh, affordability, but also achieving development in a near future state. Uh, as we know, typical construction can take anywhere from twenty-four to forty-eight or, uh, longer months in natural construction. Uh, so, simply put, the three point two five million dollars that has been allocated to L R A, uh, passed on by the Community Development Administration, which is ARPA funding, uh, will go to the development of approximately twenty, uh, or so homes in a specific corridor that has been, uh, mapped out in the exhibit A that you have attached. Uh, so this resolution simply would allow for the reclassification of those properties to Class B and also au- authorizes the transfer of the properties, uh, to the land clearance for redevelopment authority, uh, which will be the actual authority who typically performs development on behalf of, uh, the city and, you know, certainly under S L D C. Uh, so with that, I would open up, uh, any questions amongst the Commissioners.
Okay, with the information that has been presented, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty-five L R A one twenty-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. So, um, with that, uh, that concludes the- So, um, with that, uh, that concludes these resolutions. We are now going to go into closed session, um, as, uh, and we're going to have a roll call vote, uh, to close this session and go into, well, to close this meeting and to go into a closed session. Um, in the proceedings will be involving legal actions, causes of actions or litigations or confidential or privileged communications with attorneys or auditors as provided by section six one zero point two one and/or section six one zero point zero two one. So, um, I'd like to make that motion that we go into closed session, so point of clarification?
Yeah, just point of clarification, it would also be appropriate to enter closed session pursuant to section six ten oh two one subsections two and twelve relating to, um, leasing, purchasing or sale of real estate and negotiated contracts.
Okay, alright. Okay, with that, we are going into closed session and does everyone have to leave?
Motion. Leave a, a second to your motion and then a roll call vote.
Okay, yes, um, do I have a second? That we go into closed motion, okay, so it's been moved second, uh, could we call for the vote?
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hine?
Yes.
Okay, um, hearing no objections, motion carries. We are now into closed session, uh, James? Can we? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, we are now, uh, back in open session. Um, I'd like to, uh, ask for, uh, well, I'd like to make a motion that we return to open session. And if we could, um, have a roll call, first of all, uh, to see who's present.
Commissioner Arnold?
Present.
Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Hine?
Present.
Okay, with everyone being present, um, on our agenda, there's no further action. Um, our next meeting, uh, is scheduled for August the twenty-fifth. Um, I'm sorry, twenty-seventh, I'm really reading here. Our next meeting is August the twenty-seventh. Uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Alright, uh, meeting adjourned.